Well, good for you. Okay. Good morning, and thank you for being patient. We had an internet outage. I think we've found a way around it, and we're going to open the morning session for the Clickat County Commissioners for May 14th, 2024, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. And so we're probably
Thank you. So we have our business agenda.
Is there anything else you, anybody'd like to add? Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda with four add-ons. Number one, the announcement of the supplemental budget amendment public hearing is postponed until Tuesday, the 21st of May at 11:15 a.m. Number two, the HR and administrative update at 10 a.m. today has been canceled. And number three, discussions of the BOA applicant. And number four, the Skamania County Workshop Agenda is at 10 a.m.
I'll second you.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the Commissioner meeting minutes from April 9th, 2024 as presented.
Um. Sorry, I should have told you beforehand, I cannot second that. I have not had a chance to look at these minutes that have been printed in front of me. If you can give me a little later in the day, we can do them, if that's okay?
Sure.
So. And then, sorry, the only other change I had is consent agenda item number four, which is Swissler, will need to be done separately from the rest. It doesn't need to wait. This just needs to be separate from the rest.
Okay. So. Without a dies, hopefully. So, public comment, for those in the room. When you're called, please come forward and state your name and where you're from for the record, if you'd like. And also on Zoom when we call on you, make sure to tell us who you are and where you're from, if you can. Thank you. So we'll start in the room. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah.
Good morning.
Yes, thank you.
I'm still trying to find a wire to fire my hotspot, so I could.
Good morning. Just tell us when you're ready.
Commissioners, my name is Jean Patterson, and I'm speaking as a private citizen currently residing in Clickitat County, Washington. I want to begin by stating that I hold the utmost respect for the honest, hardworking, and accountable law enforcement officers throughout Clickitat County, entirely pleased with our communities. With that, we, the Clickitat County Concerned Citizens, come before the county commissioners to deliver the petition to support transfer of inmate supervision responsibility. This petition was drafted, published, and endorsed by Clickitat County residents across the political spectrum. Among our shared concerns are safety, transparency, professional responsibility, statements within this petition include, whereas possible inmate neglects at the Clickitat County Jail may have contributed to the death by suicide of one inmate. Whereas, Clickitat County very likely will be responsible for a large liability settlement in the millions of dollars to the family of an inmate who died by suicide. Whereas, Clickitat County likely was responsible for an inmate whose neglect resulted in severe, life-threatening medical crisis. Whereas, the tragic loss of life and avoidably serious suffering of Clickitat County inmates is a human tragedy with fiscal liability. Whereas, the probable liability costs related to these incidents will seriously impact the county's insurance ratings and premiums, and therefore result in either increased taxes, reduced services, or both. Whereas, it is the Clickitat County Board of County Commissioners who are responsible for maintaining a healthy and safe jail environment within a fiscally challenging budget. Therefore, we, the undersigned, intend to avoid exposing Clickitat County to potential additional liability due to incidents of the Clickitat County Jail. Do solemnly support Clickitat County Board Chair Zorer, Commissioner Anderson, and Commissioner Christopher in pursuing a legal agreement with NORC to supervise Clickitat County inmates. In only seven days, the petition to support transfer of inmate responsibility was endorsed 285 times. The petition to support transfer of inmate supervision responsibility can be viewed at clickitatcountyconcerncitizens.webly.com. This petition will remain active, and the Clickitat County Concerned Citizens encourage all Clickitat County residents to view the petition. Again, the website is clickitatcountyconcerncitizens.webly. That's W-E-E-B-L-Y dot com. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So. Thank you. So, online. Who do we have? Nobody online yet? Nope. So back in the room. In the back? Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Bruce Shelton. I am a resident in Goldendale. I don't know if y'all have any experience with dealing with somebody on blues or fentanyl, or when they're coming off of it. I spent the last year trying to help people to get, get off the stuff. It's put a target on me at times. Not everybody likes me because of it, but I do what I can to help. When people are coming off of blues or fentanyl, they're unstable. They're not there, and they're not in the right mind. They're in excruciating pain. Some of them will do anything at all, including attempting to kill themselves in order to stop that pain. As a result, I've had to actually stop trying to help some of these people because I, the emotional toll is excruciating. Now, at the same time, I've also been incarcerated a few times in jails across the country. Jail we have here, this is, it's wonderful compared to a lot of the jails that are around. The guards pay attention. Anytime that I've been in, they listen, they try to help. If you are willing to reach out and say, "I need help", they do. They don't just, "Oh, well, you're just talking crap. We don't need to pay attention." That's not the way it is here. They're quite attentive. I've been surprised and impressed. There's horror stories about a lot of jails across the country, including Norcore. Yeah, it's fancy, but that doesn't stop people from getting stabbed or neglected. Here, when was the last time you heard somebody getting stuck with something over at the Clickitat County Jail? I don't recall it. The people that are problems, they get separated when they're, when it is known that there is actually a problem. But the closed mouths don't get fed. If you don't say that you have a problem, how are they supposed to know? What's been done here is nothing short of impressive with what the budget allows. So. I don't think it's a good idea to contract with NORC and send everybody here down there. It's just going to cost us more money. Yeah, there's insurance deal, might have to pay. But that contract, that's long-term. Keeping them here, pay some money, figure it out, work it into the budget, and it's doable. There is nothing that's not impossible if you don't put your mind to it.
Thank you. Online, is there anyone willing to, or wanting to give testimony this morning online? Rush iPhone is on. Would you like to speak this morning? You were muted. Okay. No one else online? Wonder if the system's working. Sherry? Okay. Good morning, Sherry. We're not hearing you yet. Maybe we'll go back. We're working on it on our side, Sherry. I don't know if you're still muted on yours. We're using an alternative system this morning just to get us through.
It doesn't show she's speaking.
Okay. Anyone else online? We could try and see if it's on our side or your side? No hands up? Should we go forward with somebody else in the room?
But it's not showing she's speaking either.
Okay, this is Becky Tuwee.
Great.
A resident of Clickitat County, have been for many years. And I was just wondering, you know, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of emotion in, in this whole jail issue, which is a valid issue. But do we have a cost-benefit analysis as to how much it's going to benefit us to go one way or the other? I would really like to hear more about the statistics and what the costs are going to be. And that, that I haven't heard. So, that's all I have to say is I just would like to hear more about what is this going to cost us? What is the jail cost us now? A little bit more information on the whole situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Shall we go in the room and let them work a little bit on it? Is there anyone else in the room that'd like to speak this morning? Come on.
Good morning. How are you? My name is Patty Cooper, and I've been a resident of Goldendale and Clickitat County for 23 years now. I'm retired after 32 years of law enforcement and criminal justice careers. I'm a landowner, and I'm invested in this community. I am invested in this community, and I trust you all are as well, which causes me to ponder what kind of legacy am I leaving? And please consider this as well. What will your legacy be? How will you be remembered? I believe that it's a grievous mistake that you are considering in moving the inmates out of Clickitat County Jail and into Norcore. This will not be good for Clickitat County. There are many res, there are many reasons that this would not be a good move, and one of them is that 16 valued employees of Clickitat County will be losing their jobs. These employees are dedicated correctional officers and give 110% each day they go to work. Another reason is that the deputy or deputies transporting the inmates to Norcore will be unavailable for hours in transporting and paperwork. Leaving the county with one less deputy to serve and protect its citizens, I am one that is not happy about that. All jails have their problems. Norcore certainly has their problems. They have had suicides, deaths, assaults, plus many other issues there. There are, if there are problems here in Clickitat County Jail, let's fix the problems and not close down the jail. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Back online. Shall we try Sherry again? Okay. Sherry, okay, your hand's up, Sherry. I can see you would like to try again.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. Technical difficulties, usually a user error. Anyway, um, I wanted to follow up a little bit of what I spoke about before with the decision about the jail. I, I like rules, and I've talked about before, there was this document created called the Constitution, and it was, had a whole bunch of stuff in it, some rules, and it said how the government was to be ran. And I keep asking, you know, like, whose power is derived from where? Is it the legislative and the executive? Supposed to, is that in the rules? Are you supposed to close down the jail? Because I know the sheriff is supposed to derive his own powers. But I just want the rules to be followed, is whatever it is. The rules need to be followed. And government, I've asked before, are you a political subdivision, or are you a municipal corporation? Or are you both? You've told me you're a nonprofit corporation. So are you not following the government rules? Are you just a nonprofit corporation entity that doesn't have to follow that constitution and how government's supposed to run? I'm starting to wonder here, because nobody can answer my questions. How is this supposed to run if you're a government and you just took a pledge allegiance for the republic, for which you stand? Are we a republic? Who are we? But, you know, again, I don't know if I'll get these answers, because it doesn't seem right, but here we are today. I want to bring up the fact for the landowners, my that are wanting to lease the solar. It has been discovered, and there is a court case. I'm not, I don't have the particulars, but landowners, do your own research. The Lund Hill landowners have liens on their property because subcontractors were not paid by the foreign entity, you know, go figure. And, you know, this is something the landowners must look at, because if the county is not going to tell you what's happening with that, and they're not protecting you. And the county should be looking out for, the government should be looking out for the people and not wanting to protect these foreign corporations, because they have a big new green deal. And landowners, this green gold might not be gold in your favor in the end. You're leasing. You're leasing, you still own it. They can hurt you. These people can hurt you and your future and your land. Please do your own research. Talk to the Lund Hill people. And so also to the franchise agreement that the county is looking at for Carriage Your Project. Again, a no is a no, and to tell people you can't say no is a lie. It's on the first page of the document that the county commissioners can decide whether to approve it or deny it. Benton County denied one franchise to renewable. So if our county commissioners approve this franchise, people, take note. Take note. Who are they working for? They even made a rule saying no large cell, solar in that area. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sherry. Back in the room. In the back?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Marie Shelton, and I've been a resident and a landowner in Clickitat County for 18 years. I am against our jail being closed and inmates being transferred. There are better solutions to the stated problems than simply closing our jail and shipping inmates out of county, and especially out of state. We, as a community, need to work together to find best solutions. We need to do that with Sheriff Bob Songer at the helm. He is experienced, knowledgeable, honest, friendly, firm, and fair. He doesn't play games. He knows how to research and how to get to the truth, so best solutions can be gained. He does this for the entire county, from every, from the farthest corners of county right down to the inmates in our jail. Yes, there are problems that need to be addressed, and those have been stated. Those problems are found across our state and nation, not just in Clickitat County. We all need to work together to find best solutions right here in our county and set the example for other counties and jails to follow. We need to find win-win solutions. Again, I state, closing the jail and shipping inmates is not the best solution. And what about the inmates they won't accept? Sincerely, Marie Shelton.
Thank you, Marie. Back online. Raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and we'll acknowledge you. Okay. Dennis, I think you had your hand up.
Dennis Schroder, Goldendale, Washington. I think I've asked enough questions, but I don't want to bring up too much topics. There are much more topics without getting previous ones answered. So regarding questions from the 4:30, 24 meeting, what meeting was the North Roosevelt Alley situation discussed? And I believe Jake brought that up. He probably answered it the easiest. Regarding the shortage of tourism funding, Lori, you answered, uh, no information on, they had no information on a shortage, and Smith and Lee's other explanations. Jake, you explained how the tourism funding works. To be clear, I'm not referring to the Point 09 grant funding. I don't need an explanation how the tourism funding program works. I mainly want to know if the county has been using budgeted fundings from a current year to pay the previous year. And regarding the Carriage Your, it sounded to me like the Carriage Your solar project needs county permission to get their power out using a public right-of-way, and the commissioners have the avenue to slow down or stop the building project altogether. I would like a concise answer. Does the county have the power to deny access? The, regarding the questions on the 5-7 meeting last week about the risk pool. Dan, I felt you had a good answer regarding the claims are normal around the state. Thanks for explaining that there are two risk pools. However, I would still like to know which counties are in the ones Clickitat County belongs to. Would you provide me with that information? Regarding the personal property taxes versus the real estate taxes on the windmills and solar, Jake, I appreciate your answer explaining that, explaining the history of the decision, and it's encouraging that other counties are looking at the same questions. Does Clickitat County own the right-of-way along the entire proposed carrier franchise agreement on Knight Road? Nobody answered this question. From what I can tell, the public hearing last week regarding the proposed franchise, the answer is no, and some of the land is still in private ownership. I appreciate you wanting to take time to craft your answers, but I feel like that's something the board should have already known. And final comment being the Carriage Your franchise agreement was terribly written and applied for, as far as how it was presented to the public, especially the map that was accompanied with it. It seemed to me it was designed to not give specific information in the hopes that nobody would understand it. Carriage Your appears to have met that goal. I'm glad the board tabled it for 60 days.
Thank you. Back online. Why a day out there today? Okay. Mr., come forward, please. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Yosley, Goldendale. Couple of things I wanted to raise. There was a question about what gives you the authority to make decisions. And these are found in RCW. Those are the revised codes of Washington, and those are state laws. The way the Constitution works is that the legislature adopts laws. We elect the legislature, and they adopt the laws that are supposed to be enforced. In the case of the jail, I think the law clearly gives you the responsibility and duties to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of inmates in the Clickitat County Jail, and that is your decision. Right or wrong, you need to look at all the facts, the budget issues, and the issues, and make a decision, and that's what you're entrusted to do, as we have elected you to be our representatives. There are all kinds of points for and against the sheriff closing, the sheriff keeping the jail open. Are you closing it? One of the issues I know is that there's a biometric watch device that's out there. And technology is great, but technology can have its problems, especially if you're a new adopter of technology. It's important to make sure all the I, T, I's are dotted and T's are crossed, and that you know exactly what you're getting into in the long-term costs. I'll give you an example. The lights in Goldendale were switched out for LED lights, and the manufacturer of those lights went out of business, and the software that went with them was proprietary. So they had to replace all the lights and get a new contractor for controlling the lights. Those are the kind of problems you need to watch out for. The other question I have, and again, I, I feel that, you know, the politicization that has happened with the sheriff's office is not your fault. It squarely belongs with Sheriff Songer. He recently, on April 17th, attended a constitutional sheriff's meeting in Las Vegas, a training that was all about election denial and how to try and impose election oversight at the upcoming November election. I wrote to you and asked if the sheriff went to this meeting, and maybe he can answer. If any county taxpayer monies were used to attend that, either in the form of taking paid time off, travel expenses, et cetera. Because I think the mixing of politics and law enforcement should be really kept separate. The fact that politics has entered into the, the picture with the sheriff unfortunately has alienated many people in the county and got us to question whether he's pursuing a political agenda with this old constitutional sheriff movement, which I believe does not help his standing with many citizens in this county. In fact, it's very divisive. Thank you.
Thank you. Back online. Anyone online this morning wish to speak? Not seeing anyone. We'll go back into the room. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak? Just raise your hand and come up front. Good morning, Delmer.
Delmer Eldred, Goldendale. The people that are coming after the sheriff on this jail issue are the same people that, for the most part, have been trying everything they can come up with for the last six years to get Sheriff Songer out of office. Let's just take a look at some of the issues that they used to try and attack the sheriff to accomplish their goal. When Sheriff Songer asked for volunteers to form a posse, so he could have extra people to do things like helping out at public events, and that would free up the deputies so they could take calls and do patrols. Then sheriff stood up for the Second Amendment and said he would not enforce unconstitutional gun initiatives. Then he was asked to do something about the growing threat of cougars showing up around residential areas and killing newborn livestock. When he stood up for the First Amendment against unconstitutional mandates, and when he put drug dealers on notice that they were not welcome in Clickitat County, these same people come after the sheriff on every one of the issues. I could go on, but it's obvious that they are using this jail, this, the jail this time, and I doubt if there is anyone in that jail staff, including the sheriff, that doesn't have a heartfelt concern. that doesn't have a heartfelt concern about the incidents that happened. But the jail is limited to needed resources, like a nurse on staff that the sheriff has asked for. And one, one thing the commissioners failed to understand, when you cut the sheriff's budget, you limit what is necessary in all the areas of public safety. But there are some circumstances that should be looked at on these two issues that are not being brought forth. An article in the Seattle Times, Ivan's Mother states that Ivan wanted to go to opiate treatment. Why wasn't he set up for a treatment program? Washington State Healthcare Authority have free treatment programs if family members want to enroll a loved one. The prosecuting attorney had a request from the sheriff to release Ms. George from jail to be taken to a mental facility, but he refused. I believe if you want to expand the resources and provide for services for the people that have committed crime and are being confined, that you should look at, start looking at getting a grant to replace the jail with a new facility that can provide more enhanced care for the prisoners. A facility that has extra beds that can be used by other counties and charge them, and that will help defer the cost of the jail.
Thank you. And back online. Wow, seeing no one today. Anyone else in the room? Like some time up front? We'll keep waiting online, and if we don't see anybody in a, oh. Sheriff Songer. Open chair.
Bob Songer, Sheriff, Clickatack County. Quite interesting how I got attacked being Constitutional Sheriff. Even though I may disagree with comments from the left, the Democrat Party, I would protect their constitutional rights like anybody else. To answer Bob's question, I paid for my trip to Las Vegas. Not one county dime was spent. So let's make that very clear. Quite interesting on the Democrat Party. They pretty well put this together. I got to ask Lori and Jake, you got your fingerprints on this? Do you help out in any way? Did you contact the Democrat Party to come up with a partnership in this? I would think so. The only one that appears to have any common sense in this whole issue is Christopher, Dan Christopher. At least he's being fair-minded about it. You two have a political agenda, and you know it. You can sit there and deny it. Hell freezes over, but we know what the truth is. Now, interesting thing, because I talked to the chairman of Norcore Board and another member, Brad Lowry, and you guys did not have a contract in place to move correction people or move inmates on April 12th. And you're negotiating with the 16 employees, which I might add are outstanding individuals. They care, but when you cut our medical budget, where we, and that medical budget, by the way, is to take these inmates up to the hospital for care. When you cut our budget, it makes it look like the sheriff's overrun his budget again. Well, we could get into a lot more detail, and I'm probably running out of time here. But I am totally convinced that if you contract with Norcore, it'll be the biggest mistake this county's ever made. And that's coming from two board members of Norcore. And by the way, any person arrested in Clickatack County, if you contract with them, has to be booked in Clickatack County and medically cleared before they'll accept them. That was told to me by those two board members. So him near was assaulted, damn near killed with a suspect that's got mental problems. Hit him in the head with a hammer. Guess what? Norcore would not have taken that individual, but what would we do with him? And we got a prosecutor who refuses to cooperate with us in trying to get people into these mental institutions. So if I make a mistake, the buck stops at my desk and I'm willing to take on the heat. You guys should do the same. And like I said, the only one I respect out of this board up here is Dan Christopher. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyone else? Pat Arnold, good morning.
Good morning. I didn't sign the petition to to send inmates to Norcore because I am still waiting for Sheriff Songer to tell us what steps he is going to take to fix the jail. I, I was interested in the inmate who spoke earlier. A lot of my concerns are whether it's really the best move for the people who are incarcerated here. If it's the best move to send them to Norcore, keep them here, my gut feeling is. For them and for the jail employees, it would be better if it could happen to keep this jail open. But I have been waiting now for weeks for Sheriff Songer or for under Sheriff, Deputy Sheriff Culp to tell us what they're going to do. And I haven't heard a word out of them about that. And I would be, I would urge you not to make a decision until you hear a clear plan from the people who are currently running this jail about what they will do. And I'm tired of this, this constant deflection, oh, it's your fault, it's your fault, it's somebody else's fault. No, Sheriff Songer just said the buck stops here. Well, okay, good. I'm glad to hear him say that. So let's see what his plans are to fix this problem before you make the decision. And that's what I have to say. And also, I would like to advise everybody that it's the Democratic Party, the Democratic Party, not the Democrat Party. It's, it's a simple thing to learn to say somebody's name right or a party's name right, and I would urge people to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Come forward.
Good morning. Cindy Dogg, Clickatack County, Goldendale. I believe there was a proposed bill in the state Capitol regarding removal of Constitutional Sheriffs. I believe it was defeated, but that is the Constitutional Sheriffs are being blackballed. And it isn't right, and it is from the Democratic Party. Thank you.
Thank you. Back online. No one? No one there today? Yeah, we're still having trouble with our system, so be patient. No one online? Okay, we'll go back in the room, I think. Yes, Amanda.
Good morning. My name is Amanda Kitchens. I live in White Salmon. I just was hoping that you guys could break down how the budgeting of the jail and sheriff's office works for all of us. How much of a county jail is funded by the state or federal government? Is there money for that? Have you, in fact, cut the sheriff's budget or the jail budget? If you could just clarify how it all operates, I think we could all learn a lot. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amanda. Online. Just know that they're not getting in or not visiting this morning, so. So we'll do in-room again. Is there anyone else that would like to give testimony this morning? Come forward, please.
Andrew Smith, Clickatack County. Going through all the complaints and listening to it for the past six weeks. As a truck driver, I went through tons of training. School bus driver, I went through tons of training. Pop songers. So sheriff's department, jail, posse members, they go through training?
Yes.
Do they do online training?
Yes.
Is it a requirement, or do you throw it out there?
No, it's a requirement. They go through a certain amount of mandatory training, and then additional training that we can afford.
Oh, county commissioners, how much allotment do you hand out for training for these people? I know everything costs money. I also know everything on some of it online is free. There is some that you got to pay monthly bills. How much money do you spend out on training?
I believe our training budget and ten.
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand for the deputies.
All right, so what about the jailers? I know we got one here. Yeah, how much training you've taken?
Four thousand dollars.
And how much for the posse?
We do the training for the posse.
That includes the seven thousand? Is that right, Camilla?
No.
No?
The posse is in-house training from our instructor, so.
So that seven thousand covers everything. Sounds a little weak in training budgets. So now I understand why we got so much issues. I don't know where the money's going to come from, but it sounds like we need a little more money for training if we want to keep this all together. Any thoughts on that, Sheriff?
Well, obviously, if you want to minimize liability, you got to be able to pay for the training. Because the first thing you're going to get sued on is a lack of training or lack of supervision. That's where the attorneys go after it right off the bat, if there's an issue that comes up.
Wow, okay. That's for all three members here to make comments at the time. And you can make more comments later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Online. Nope. Come forward, please. Thank you.
Andy Anderson, Goldendale. All I hear about is a problem. We have a problem, but nobody has told us what the problem is. Is there one problem, two problems, 50 problems? Tell us what the problem is. You've got to know what the problem is before you can fix it. And I've been sitting here for weeks, and I haven't figured out what the problem is yet.
Thank you. Online. Nope, it's just silent today. I have to think it's the thing. It's never like this. Yeah, wow. So anyone else in the room? Come forward, please.
Pastor Larry Reed from Goldendale. I'd like to direct this question to Dan. Because, well, my question is, I read in the paper, and that's where I got this information, that a couple of meetings ago, the two of you, Anderson and Zoller, conducted a meeting to where Mr. Anderson would make a motion, you would step down from your position in his chair and second it, and then you would go ahead and pass the point. That definitely does not sound like a normal way of doing business in my book. Now, my question is, in your Commissioner's guidelines, is that proper procedure, number one? And if it's not, why did you choose to do that? And thirdly, what were the issues that you two voted on doing this routine that sounds so unorthodox to me that I just, I can't imagine you guys serving people and doing this without the third member of your commission?
Thank you. Okay, online. Nope, anyone else in the room today? Go ahead. Just very simple. I seem to hear the same questions being asked. What are the problems? You know, once we figure out what the problems are, and I'm sure you already know or have an idea, then we can work on a fix. But I hear the same questions with no answers. Is there a place that we can go to find the answers? Is that your job? Is it my job to research it? I'm retired. I can do that. But where do we get the answers? How do we know? Where do we, where's the budget? What is it going to cost us to send our inmates to Norcore? Which, by the way, I'm totally against. But what is that costing us versus what can we do to fix what we've got going on here? Why do we have to send our people to another state? I pay taxes. I'm a property owner. And I, I have a problem paying Oregon. If I wanted to pay Oregon, I'd live there. And really, that's kind of all I, all I have to say. How do I find those answers?
I'm sorry, man. Can we get your name?
Maureen Dickman. I'm a resident here in Goldendale, property owner. Thank you. Try online again. Oh, no, you're okay. Online, anyone? Okay, back in the room. Carmen.
Morning, Commissioners. My name's Carmen Knopf. I'm the under sheriff for Clickatack County Sheriff's Office and the former chief of the jail. This has been a very emotionally charged topic, not only for staff, for citizens of this county, but also for the inmates. I would like to point out, and so that the public is very aware, that when people are sentenced on felony charges, they become part of the Department of Corrections. If there was a transfer of inmates to Norcore in the state of Oregon, those inmates would not be allowed to be in Oregon because DOC cannot just go over and pick up an inmate out of state. It requires a special waiver of extradition. That means these people would sit somewhere. I don't know what jail. Evidently, the commissioners can figure that out, maybe. I'm not sure. But last week, we sent four people to prison. It is not uncommon to send one to five on a monthly basis. So we have to think about that, and the citizens need to know that we do send people to prison, and those people cannot go to an Oregon jail. It makes no sense to go to an Oregon jail. As far as some of our programs, we have some pretty amazing mental health programs going in now within the jail, with added ones coming in this year. We do need some more money. Yes, we know budgets are tight, but we're gracious to have programs through our own behavioral health department that are not adding to our budget, and those come from grants that they have gotten. We do care about our inmates. We do provide them the help and healthcare that we need. In fact, we just transported one to a hospital yesterday, so there's some more added cost. We can't control those costs, but we can do everything we can in our power to make these people healthy by providing what medical care is available locally. And sometimes we have to transfer them out of our custody into a DOC facility where they have better healthcare systems. We currently are housing two that way, and that's through a boarding contract. That contract would end if they're transferred out of our jail and into Norcore. I just hope that you guys all look at everything that you're doing. at everything that you're doing. And I don't know that you understand the impact that you're having, not only on my staff, but your citizens. You are jeopardizing the public safety of the citizens of Clicktack County, and you continually do this. I don't understand.
Thank you, Carmen. One more time, online. Anyone today? Anyone else in the room today? No one? Well, moving on, I see some of the departments in the back getting ready for their time, so maybe it's a timely. We'll move on, and for commissioners' comments. Mr. Christopher.
I will go. I will try to get all these. There are so many, and I can't take good notes when I'm actually paying attention to you. So if I miss you, or you thought you had a valid question that I didn't answer, please reach out to me. I did hear everybody, and I wanna thank everybody for showing up. A lot of good comments today. I won't single them out. Some of the questions that I got that I will answer. Mr. Schroder, does the county have the power to deny access for franchise agreement? The answer is yes. What counties are in the risk pool? Again, reach out if you need the information elsewhere. But if you go to wcrp.info, which is Washington County's risk pool, wcrp.info, you can get a map that looks like this. Oops, and then I touched a button while I turned the computer around. And you'll get a map that looks like this that will tell you what counties are in our risk pool. That doesn't mean the other ones are in the other risk pool, because you have things like Snohomish, King, and Pierce that are self-insured. So for the most part, you have the four little counties in the corner of Southern Columbia, Garfield, Whitman, Grant, Lincoln, Ferry, Stevens, Skamania, Clark, Wakayakam. They're in the other group. Everybody else is in ours. So that should answer that one. Again, if you want map or the web link or whatever, let me know. And then a whole bunch of comments about the jail. And a petition. Unfortunately, this issue to me has become nothing but political banter. You have the I hate Sheriff Bob fan club, all wanting to close the jail. They don't need any information. They don't need any proof. They don't need any documents. They don't need to see a budget. Bob's bad. Close jail. And then you have the I like Sheriff Bob fan club that say, jail's fine. Keep the jail open. I wish it didn't. I wish this board would have handled this differently so it wouldn't have had the political stench that I believe it has. And that might be a strong word. But that's, at this point, that's what it is. We're playing politics. Because the question keeps coming up. What issues do we have? Hey, great question. Let's find out. I try to do investigation. Board doesn't wanna do an investigation. I am urging Bob, urging you publicly, sir. I think it is in our best interest for you to reach out to a big county, Benton County, Yakima County, reach out to the Sheriff's Association. Get one of those bigger counties that you're not affiliated. Have them come in and do a check, because my guess, they're gonna say, you know what, that toilet paper roll dispenser probably should be placed an inch higher. Or you're gonna get some stupid things like that. You might actually find one or two things that it's like, whoops, we probably screwed up on that. We could probably fix that. But you're gonna find something that's easy to fix. And at this point in the process, with this being so politically charged, I think that's the only way you save it.
I agree.
So I urge you, since I can't get this board to do it, because I believe they're afraid of what the answer will be. I urge you to do it, sir. I urge you to reach out and call somebody in to get an investigation. I can't have a dialogue with you at this time, but you know where I stand on that. And for everybody else, please try to go through it with an open mind and keep the politics out of it. I mean, look at, let's look at the budget. Sure, great. Let's look at it. Let's look at all the different things, and then let's come up to an educated answer with all the parties transparently. I don't like backroom confidential documents. I'm it's just frustrating. Amanda asked about the sheriff's budgeting. I have that actually on my phone. Because somebody else asked about it in a text message a while back. I don't have 2023 in this picture of the budget analysis that I believe you've been provided now. I think I texted it to you. But it's open to anybody that wants it. So and I won't go through it with a fine-tooth comb, because we have time constraints today. The budgeted amount in 2019 was five million, seven thousand and change. 2020 was five million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand and change. The budgeted amount in 2021 was up two hundred thousand to five point four four seven and change. Then in 2022, it was down two hundred thousand, because 2021 was the COVID cash year. So it came back down to what it was in 2022, actually a little bit higher, five point two eight three change. 2023 was five point two nine three, so ten thousand higher and change. I do not have 2024 in here. If you need it, just reach out. Call the finance lady. Call one of us. We'll get to the 2024 numbers. Nobody's hiding anything. That is the budgeted amount. The actuals are different. Obviously, if you wanna ask the question, we'll answer the question. There's no secrets there. Lot of things on training. Any county employee in this room can tell you that I'm a firm believer in training. I think if you don't have training, you're gonna screw up. If you screw up, it costs. The more you're trained, the better you are at your job, the more efficient and the more productive you are, better for all of us. I will never turn down a training budget, ever, for anybody. Unless it's in, you know, Fiji or something. I'm gonna turn that down. Or if it's a noxious weed summit, a coastal noxious weed summit in Astoria that doesn't have anything to do with Clicktack County, and it's a six-hour meeting, and you ask for four days of hotel. No. Yes, that happened. So that is, that one, that one, because you're sorry, there's so many. Larry, is the meeting proper? We don't get along. Was what they did proper? Absolutely. It's a board of three. If somebody is not here because they were on vacation, or they were sick, the board chair then steps down, seconds the motion, passes the motion. Now it is in good. It's nice that if there was some kind of interesting topic that was kind of maybe a decisive or a divisive topic, that you would hold that over and wait for the third commissioner to at least be able to have a say. You don't need their vote, because you can pass it with two. But hold it over so that third one can at least vote. I did not see anything in those two weeks that they voted on that was a snub in my nose that they should have held over for me. So I don't see anything on there that they did wrong in holding those meetings and making those votes and/or deciding on the things that they did decide on. So I don't have any issues with that. But other than that, thank you Pastor Larry for being always so positive. Is there a place to go to find the answers? This goes back to the jail answer questions. Technically, yes. Now, I have a big sheet of them that says confidential on it. Which confidential to me is the opposite of transparent. But eventually, I'm assuming the confidential will come off. I'm hopeful that the confidential will come off. I'm hopeful we can go through those questions, sitting right here in a workshop on a Thursday for eight hours. Question by question, answer by answer, with the sheriff, with the public. How did we drive that answer and actually educate the public? Question by question, answer by answer. We'll see. I don't have a lot of power here. So with that, I will end my comments. If I missed you, please reach out. Again, I'm just asking everybody, keep the politics. Let's get to the facts and make an educated decision, and until we actually have facts, you shouldn't be making a decision, yes or no, until you have the facts. But again, my problem is the process. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Shelton, thank you for coming. Thank you for giving us your experience, and thank you for continuing to help out members of the community who are going through withdrawals and the scourge of fentanyl. Becky, you hit it right on the head. There's a lot of emotion. This is a valid question. We're having this in a very public debate, public spectacle. For me, I try to take emotion out of the decisions. Usually, the things that we deal with are numbers. That's, we are in charge of the budget. The sheriff's department is one piece. It's a large piece of the overall county budget in which your taxpayer, taxpayer dollars constitute a good portion of that budget. It's not all the budget, but it's a good portion of it. I can tell you that all of the amount, it's been brought up by multiple people. You all pay taxes. Yep. We all pay property taxes. If we own anything, if we rent it, we're still paying it. All of the property taxes you pay don't cover the sheriff's budget alone. So just in public health, safety, and welfare, that's just the sheriff's budget. You also have to think about the rest of public safety, the 911 system, the court system, making sure people that are out, you know, that are being looked at by our other departments that are part of that system. That takes up about all the money we pay in sales tax in the county that we receive. That doesn't leave anything for the rest of government functions. Yeah, we've been talking about this since Commissioner Christopher and I came in, that we were facing significant headwinds. Eighty percent of the money that we're now receiving from the landfill now goes into our general fund, which pays for the things that we need, the services that you get, whether it's the auditor's office, the clerk's office, all the other things. And that number continues to grow. It used only be about fifty percent of the money that came out of the landfill. This is the situation we're in, and it's not gonna get better in the upcoming years, at least for four or five years that I can see. And these are the hard decisions and the hard issues that we all need to be a part of. Which leads me to Sherri in answering your question one more time. We, and I thank Bob for pointing it out. We are a subdivision of state government. We are only allowed to do what the state government allows us to do. We are strict in that interpretation. We can't go off and create our own decisions and create our own laws unless the state legislature allows us to do it. I hope that we have created a municipal corporation, which is something that state law allows us to do, but that is wholly separate from the Board of County Commissioners. In order for us to manage that municipal corporation, we have to close this session and open that session. But that corporation has been sitting there, and it was used primarily for revenue bonds many years ago. Hasn't done anything in the course of time. So for your answer, ninety-nine percent of what we do is all within the political subdivision of state government. Dennis, I will have staff work on getting you the answer on the date that that meeting was held with Public Works. I don't have that kind of memory. Dan answered many other questions. Bob, thank you for your clear and concise comments. I thought many of those were right on point. Which leads me to Delmer and Sheriff Songer. We didn't make this political. We didn't ask for this to be political. I did not have anything to do with this petition. I have not met with the Democratic Party. I have not given anyone any ideas to do this. We are full-time trying to be county commissioners. In fact, we try to stay out of the politics, because when I get elected, it's my job to represent everyone, not just the Republicans or the Democrats or the people I agree with. My job is to represent everyone and represent them equally and make the hard decisions when we're forced to make those hard decisions. So no, I can sit here and deny it, because it's true that I did not have anything to do with either of the petitions that were put forward. The county commissioners did not cut the medical budget of the sheriff's office. The county commissioners came forward and said, you need to bring forward a budget of this amount. It came up during the last meeting with our finance, head of finance on our side, not the auditor, that it was the sheriff's office who amended that and set those numbers with medical. When Dan and I, sorry, Commissioner Christopher, since we came in, we have always asked for, give us accurate numbers. Don't blow smoke when we go through the budget process. Give us accurate numbers of what those accurate costs are. And then if it needs to go up or it needs to go down, we can do that. That's what we've always asked for, so that there's not additions put into budget so that people can slush money around. Because we know that was easy to do when we had excess funds from the landfill. That's not the case anymore. Because if one office isn't gonna use the money, another office may need the money. Otherwise, we're pulling from reserves. That's not a place I think any of us want to be in. Pat, your questions. Thank you for your questions. I will let the sheriff answer. Cindy, I did not see any legislation from what I saw about regarding the removal of constitutional sheriffs. I don't know how you could do that according to the Constitution. The state legislature cannot just say, we don't like you, we're going to remove you. That's not something you can do for electeds. Andrew, you ask a great question. Training. We all need training. We all need to find the most efficient ways to get training for our staff and our employees. And training budgets are usually one of the first things that are cut when you look anywhere in government when it comes to financial situations where things are getting tighter. Because that's one of the few levers that you do have to pull. It's not, unless you go, remember in the state and the county a few years ago where we went and started, you know, having Fridays where you didn't work for, you know, almost a year when the state was facing budget crises. Those are hard levers to pull. So the first thing you do, which we did the first years we were in office, we started cutting all the fluff out of the budget. And we kept cutting it to the bone so that people could stay within the budget, as is, you know, the budgets don't grow. We just have, the simple answer is we get one percent more money, and we have inflation much higher than that. That creates a delta that we've been making up with, with the landfill, and that that's tapped out now, especially as landfill dollars are going down. And training is one of the places that people cut the first years, and I remember that. So a lot of this is, the answers are gonna come to revenue in the end, which are gonna come on each person sitting in the audience and sitting online. Because the revenue that we're going to have in order to, if we wanna raise revenues, the only place it comes from is from the populace. And that's a big decision that needs to be had in public with all of us about what we want to do. Here in Clicktack County, our property taxes are the lowest in the state, our sales taxes lowest in the state. We are in the fortunate position where we've been able to keep our taxes low so that we do have those levers to pull in the future. Other counties don't. They pulled those levers long ago, and they have high taxes. But they are in the exact same position that we are, because they don't have the landfill that adds about ten million, well, hopefully eight million dollars this year into their general fund. Maureen and others who asked about the problems and the issues, and what are we gonna do? Liability is real. Liability, we're paying, you know, think about it. Our general fund budget runs around twenty million dollars. About one million dollars of that comes just out of insurance. You think one twentieth of it's insurance. Insurance continues to climb. Commissioner Christopher serves on the insurance board. We, the one thing that he didn't mention is that there are two insurance pools. We used to be in the other pool, and our insurance was about one point two million a couple of years ago. We switched pools to save money. And so far, that's working. But that insurance is going, getting higher too. Insurance is going to continue to increase for all of us, whether we have homeowner's insurance. Hopefully, we still have it with the fire danger or the county. It's going to continue to go up. It's going up much faster than our revenues are going up. I could promise you that. But what I will say is that I gave the sheriffs, with the consent of my seatmates, eight pages of questions. And those questions, and hopefully those answers will give us many of the answers to the questions of what is the problem? Where is the problem? How are we gonna fix it? It takes time to come up with those answers. I've been giving it as much leeway as I can, because Carmen is doing a lot of work, and she's also trying to work and she's also trying to work on these answers and I think her for her time trying to work on this. But that's about the only place you're going to come to find the answers to what are the problems? And those aren't just the problems of today. What are those, the problems in the future? Because we need to know, the sheriff's been talking for years about, we need a new jail. Well, new jail is going to be upwards at minimum of sixty million dollars. Do you know what that's going to do to all of our taxes? And are we able to do that? And if we do take that, take on that responsibility, are other junior taxing districts going to get cut because we go over the ten dollars per thousand allowed? These are the questions that we have to ask as we make these hard decisions moving into the future because the money all comes from all of us. We're all taxpayers. And I'll leave the rest to you.
Thank you. Um, so I'm going to, uh, keep mine very short if I can and echo both what my seatmates said. Uh, I, I agree with most of everything that was said today. Uh, and yes, I'll clarify with you, Mr. Songer, I had nothing to do with them creating a, um, or the other one. I, that's what those people have chosen to do. And I thank them each side for their work and their opinion. Oh, where do I start? Mr. Shelton, thank you so much for your involvement and thank you for reaching out to people. There, it is so, so true that there's a lack across the entire state for help with fentanyl. And there's a lot of programs that people are working on, but we're kind of behind the ball on that one. And the problems are happening and the people are suffering and we need to catch up. And every county is in this shape where they're trying. Dennis, uh, the right away, I want to clarify that. It's true, we could say no on that franchise. But where that leaves us later, if we don't negotiate that and if an application happens to go through and we don't negotiate that right away, we have no protection for that road. We would be paying for the destruction and the repair of what happens on that road. So that's something we have to work our way through to make sure we get what we need out of that, but yet we're protected. And then the second side of that, if we do say no, that leaves us open to potential litigation. We've given those franchise agreements to other people. What will they say if they have an application and we're trying to use it as a blockade? They would probably take us to court and we'd be paying out money for court. So it's a tricky situation. We have to find a balance there, how to approach that. For everyone's questions today in regards to the, um, studies, fact finding, moving forward with where we're going, um, I thank you for your patience. I know it's tough. Like legalities and privacy and everything else demands that that team works together and creates documents as a whole. And then it becomes public. And we have people asking for it already, but because it's still in the draft form, that's kept us in a safe position to move that forward and do the right thing and look at everything, not just this or that, but actually look at everything. And it's been a tough job. It's been a lot of work. And, um, I can tell you, they're worn out from actually talking to every outside source we can find and gaining knowledge and background on what that would cost, what that would look like for all options. And soon as it becomes public, you'll be able to see all of it too. So you'll have that in your hand and you'll understand costs and you'll understand everything that they've looked at, you'll be able to see. And Amanda, you ask about budgets and I think it's, it's really interesting on budgets. You know, we have the departments that come in and do their budgets and they actually work for the county commissioners. So when they come in, it's a little bit of a different discussion about your budget because you work for the county commissioners and you represent us and you're only as good as who's out there working for you. So we appreciate all our departments and what they do with their budgets and how they work. With elected, it's true, many times Bob says, I'm the elected sheriff, this is mine. And so, you know, we have that too with the other electeds. They have their job that they were elected to do. And that budget is their budget, uh, just like with the auditor this year. She came in as a new auditor and she needed a, legally needed a room where we could, uh, do the voting and keep the voting thing so that can be scrutinized through a window and it keeps us legal. And so she dreamt that up. This is what I need. This is how I want to run my office. This is what I'm going to do. Uh-oh, I just disappeared. Uh, sorry about that. And so we worked with her on that. And I can say, over the years, it has been kind of a separated relationship that I've seen between the sheriff and the commissioners. And that needs to be cured. They need to be at the table as valuable partners discussing what the sheriff needs. I'm not a wizard. I don't know if he doesn't have things over there. And when their budget comes in, their budget is what they've dreamt. Their budget is what they need, what they see. And then we say legally and financially, can we fit this in there? And that's how we've worked together, uh, by the requests that's came in. And I get the same from the road department and the same from EMS. And sometimes our conversations aren't easy. But we have to work our way through it and serve the public the best way we can with the money that we have. And we did not cut any medical. We did not. And that was clarified last week. You can watch the uh, public statement when our finance officer came in and explained it last week. It's recorded. Um, there was just a couple of things that I wanted to address and then I'll move on because I know our departments are, are waiting. I find it insincere when Mr. Christopher states, um, that somehow he was blindsided or didn't realize things were happening because it's documented. He stated for years there were served severe problems with the sheriff, severe budget problems, and he wanted to cut those. So now to claim he didn't know and he wasn't part of it, if he knew back then, and I wasn't here then, if he knew back then, why didn't he start those conversations then? Why didn't he go see Sheriff Songer? Why didn't he ask for something to happen then? And we wouldn't be down the road behind the ball at this point. If somebody knew. No, I'm not doing anything. I'm moving forward and don't claim I'm doing it because you're the one that brings it up. I'm just not going to stand for politicizing from this pulpit. You need to stay to task and stay to work. So, uh, I think we've covered the budgets and, um, part of the reason things seem so disconnected and people don't know what go on is because there's confidentiality. It does, it does touch employees. It does touch legalities. It does touch budgets. And so they've had to work the way they're working to present us a packet and you a packet to protect everybody involved until that point. Uh, and not to cause further litigation. And that's another reason for investigations. Anything we create, say an investigation, becomes public document. That becomes a document for attorneys who are investigating. And we can't add to the fire. And that's all I have. So we are, um,
Just one comment.
Sure.
May twenty-fifth, ten AM, noon, Golden Dale Green. I will be holding the town hall meetings. And anybody that wants to speak and speak and will address the role of a constitutional sheriff, which is a separate lane of travel, which is supposed to do it, and we'll talk about jail issues.
And I'd like to add one more meeting that you're having through your office, through Tim Neer, I heard. Saturday at one o'clock honoring fallen police officers. And it's Fallen Police Officer Week, correct? Okay, thank you.
Clarification, Mr. Songer, did you say that was Saturday, the twenty-fifth? From ten to noon? Thank you.
Hey. And so we'll move on to someone with a lot of patience this morning, Jeff Hunter from Public Works. Okay. Hi.
Just for clarification from my seatmates, I was able to read the minutes. I have no issues.
I didn't, sorry, I can't hear you.
I was able to read the minutes. I have no issues.
Okay.
Just friendly, um, advice for the sheriff. Uh, R eleven fifteen. Uh, based on past history, we probably need to make sure that it starts at, even if we have a speaker.
Cut it off early. That means hurry up.
Okay. We'll zip right through.
Okay.
Anytime you're ready.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, maybe I missed it. I didn't hear the consent agenda approved or not approved, so. I didn't, okay. So I can go through what we got on there? We, whatever the board's preferences.
I, I have no issues with your items on the consent agenda, sir.
Okay, thank you. We won't, we won't cover those then.
Okay.
Keep things moving. We have a couple of pay estimates. One to Deattley Crushing for six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars fifty-one cents. That's for our, our crushing project. We also have a natural, our Northwest Natural Homes, twelve thousand, four hundred and twenty. That's for the Superior Court project. And pay estimate one, which is Prime Interiors for sixteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars. That's also for the Superior Court Room project. Those are grant funded project. That is a grant funded project. Um, we also have, this is a heads up, it's not on the, or it is on the agenda. There's a change order. Number one and the amount of a hundred and twenty-seven, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars, sixteen cents. This is for the structural contract, concrete for the, um, sale barn. All we could do, we didn't have footing design or anything. So the way the project is laid out, we just had a, a, a a holder in place for that. So we knew we'd have to change order in that cost because with the footings could not be designed until the building was picked out. And once the building is picked out, then you know what the footing design is because we chose not to have the building designed. We put it on the contractor. It's a saving grace. You're not paying ten percent to an architect to design a building. I don't know if Ron's still here. He is still here. It is in their budget. They were anticipating this.
That was my question.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Seth.
All right. For construction this week, the crushing contract continues in Fisher Hill Quarry. Uh, the Bickleton area paving project, paving's been completed on Roosevelt Grade Road and they're now working on East and West Market Streets. And then East Road will follow after that. Sundale Old Highway Eight construction began yesterday and the annual striping began yesterday as well. For road design, the data collection ball banking project is complete and all deliverables are in hand. Sunnyside Road overlay, we're continuing work on the design. Bridge repair bundles, a consultant agreement is under review at WashDOT so we can get started on that project.
Quick question, if I may. There, there is so many, uh, road projects going on in Bickleton. Have you guys thought about, or you might be ahead of me and I've already done it, created a list of those projects and when you anticipate start to end so that it can be posted out on the market or something, on the door or something, so people can kind of get in an ETA or a timeline on each one of these projects so they maybe don't call you or me seven thousand times to ask that question. It might save us time and make it a little more efficient if we did something like that, just.
No, we can do that. That's it, Jeff. Oh, okay. Uh, maintenance side, we're brooming and patching on the east side. On the west side, we're mowing and grading. It's that time of the year. Uh, sale barn, the slab is scheduled to be bored next Tuesday. Superior Court, Rue Yubondle, his project is on hold. Court's bashkin session will be back at it in July again.
Change our timeline at all for the carpenters to do the wheelchair access, the uh, handrails and the cover of the beer garden. Is that, is that, is there any chance we get the beer garden covered by demolition derby day?
Uh, no.
Okay.
But we're going to get the sum of it here. We're going to get the sum of it. Um, because we had to make a decision, uh, but, uh, well, we could skip to that real quick. We are doing the ADA. They have started. Please keep in mind, we still only have one carpenter. We usually have two. The other guy's still recovering from the fall off the scaffolding last year. If we can keep them on those scaffolding and ladders, we're, uh, but grandstand improvements, ADA improvements have started. So that will be taken care of. So I'll skip back. We have a couple of events this weekend. Oregon Trail Rally's coming to town. That's, uh, uh, people like that event. It's a very good event. Been here for quite a while. And the Quackers will also be here. Ducks Unlimited. Uh, I said few line, we're just moving forward. Grandstand improvements, like we talked about, HVAC Pioneer Center is getting complete. And I'm thinking we're going to take SADAS pass off because I believe it is finally complete. Other, other things, uh, this is a heads up, uh, for the consent agenda next week. We put in our contract, it saves us money, um, to not flag roads because you pay quite a bit. It's, I don't remember what it is. It's forty dollars an hour or something like that for the flaggers. Eighty dollars an hour. Okay, my mistake. I knew it was high. See, I'm behind times. Uh, eighty dollars an hour. So when they're doing the mass cuts, it would hold people up a long time. So we will, we propose to close the road. It's from, I believe, the end of May through August. But it will, won't not be closed for local traffic and deliveries and all that. It'll be, it'll be maintained open. But it is a through road, so people would, there's a, there's a good alternative route there. Um, it doesn't get that much traffic anyway. It's mainly local access, but this will prevent us from having to keep the road open. Old Highway Eight portion will stay open. That is more of a, a through route than Sunday oldness, but that you will see that next week. And then we like to end on a positive note whenever we can. We've been told there are FEMA dollars available. We will be applying for those FEMA dollars, which will offset a lot of our costs from the January, the January event. And that's quite a bit. And we'll look into getting costs for a lot of different items. We'll work with Jeff and his group and his people to get that done.
I thought we already did that.
No, they declared an event, but we have not actually went forward with it. I mean, they just finally declared the event. We had the first kickoff meeting, uh, yesterday.
In order to get to declaration, didn't we have to come up with the cost numbers so that we could?
We did. We did have the cost numbers, but that was just, so we had enough to declare. But now we're actually going to dig into the meat and potatoes and actually get as much as we can. Now we actually file for those. We, we gave an overall cost estimate of what we did. But now we still have a project that we just estimated, which thank goodness because it's a, it's a lot more expensive than we thought. It just keep Cook Road, just Mr. Anderson probably knows where Cook Road is. It's on the west side. The road keeps coming apart because those trees that were there, we just lost another four of them the other day.
So when they, when they issued the amount of dollars that they appropriated, it wasn't for what we actually put in for? We actually can go back and get more than what we put in for?
Yeah, all they do is, the way FEMA works, from what I, when I used to do it, is you get, there's a certain threshold you need to meet to get be, to meet the, to be declared a state of emergency. Then once they declare a state of emergency, then FEMA comes in and actually works with you. We just gave an estimate, us, PUD and, uh, emergency management. And that was enough to, to set the thresholds. The county made the threshold. Now they'll actually send project managers in and we'll go through the different categories of things. Snow response. So we can get some of our overtime back, we're hoping, because we put a lot of overtime in on the roadside, which has, has been very detrimental to us. And also the, the stuff we spent on the facility side. So hopefully we can recoup those dollars too, or a big percentage of those stuff. That's all I have.
I have a statement for you from the board. The commissioners would like to acknowledge Public Works for receiving the certificate of good practice, which has been transmitted to the State Treasurer on behalf of Clickatack County. Pursuant to the authority contained in RCW thirty-six point seventy-eight point oh nine oh. And in recognition of the fact that this county has submitted to the Department of And in recognition of the fact that this county has submitted to the Department of Transportation. Or to the CRA Board, all reports required by law or regulation of the board. And has reasonably complied with provisions of law relating to county road administration. And with the standards of good practice as formulated and adopted by the board. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good work, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you.
And all your gentleman staff, sorry.
Consent agenda, can I, I'm, I'm moving alongs.
That's okay. If you're done with us, we'll leave.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Commissioner Meeting Minutes for April ninth and April sixteenth as presented.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
I.
Aye, motion passes.
Madam Chair, I move that we pass the consent agenda with seven items, pulling item number four to be voted on separately.
Second?
Uh, motion and his, motion and a second. Discussion. Um, can I still add an item to the consent?
No, no.
Okay. So moving on, motion in a second, uh, no discussion. All those in favor?
I.
Aye.
And then you guys will need to do number four if you would like. Which is Swissler.
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair, uh, we have before us Amendment Number Five between the State of Washington Department of Ecology and Natural Resources for the purpose of a time extension to negotiate changes. To the scope in the Department of Ecology's budget regarding the Swissler Reservoir SEPA Review Project. My motion is to approve.
And I will step down in second. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, any discussion? I'm sorry, Mr. Christopher.
I will just say that I've uh been opposed to Clickatuck County handling that. This whole time, which is the reason for any public interest on why I'm voting no. And that's all I have.
More discussion.
It's just a time extension. I know.
Yeah, and uh, yeah, and we did have clarification of that last week uh from Department of Ecology, so I was satisfied with that, so. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those uh.
Nay.
Motion passes.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move that we pay the accounts payable warrants in the amount of eight hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and thirty three dollars and sixty one cents, and the payable benefit warrants in the amount of. Eight hundred and ninety two thousand four hundred and eighty eight dollars and fifty eight cents for the date ending May thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Right.
Aye, motion passes. So moving on to unfinished business. So from IT. And Mr. Culp. Yes, Randy, I'm sorry. And I think is Mr. Culp with you? Up front on the subject, yeah.
Aye.
Uh.
It's your, it's your party.
Yeah. I think you're here for this, so go ahead and sit up front with him. My party. Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So this is a technical review of the system. It's not meant to um. It, it's, it's meant to inform the deciding body. It's, it's um, it's not a, a recommendation for or against this product. Um, so um oversight, or excuse me, Overwatch is a product that was put out by a company named Foresight. Uh, the comp- Foresight, it was established in twenty twenty. Um, they have approximately twenty five employees. Uh, and this particular um. Uh, device is, is gen- is the second generation. The major difference between the first generation and the second generation is how the devices communicate to the internet, because that's really what it comes down to. So um, so the way it works is, is. You've got these devices, these wristbands that go on each, each of the um. Of the, the subjects, inmates, whatever. And um, it's, it's, it kind of sends the same information as a Fitbit or an Apple Watch or something like that would. Okay, um. Uh. Their first generation, so that communicates with a gateway. The gateway is hardwired to um, to a, a network connection, and then that network connection transmits the data. To a, a predetermined site that, and, and they communicate in, in that manner.
So clarification question, this, I'm assuming this gateway would be like an antenna? That is like in the cell block somewhere, and that would communicate with the, let's say, control bard?
Yeah, it's more like a Wi-Fi router.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's collecting all the data?
It's.
And shooting it off to, I'm assuming, the control board?
Yes, shooting it off through the wire.
Right, okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, um, so that comes in now, that's my biggest concern, is the wireless connection from the device to the um, to the gateway. Okay, so the way that um. So, and my concern with that is, is steel wall, or excuse me, the concrete walls with steel doors. Okay, um, the first generation of this project used uh Bluetooth. For that, for that connection. Um, Bluetooth is designed for um, for earbuds, you know, to, to talk to your phone and things like that. Um, this is more of a um, you know. The, the distance that it had to go, I, I can only imagine, and I got confirmation from the um, from the, that, that didn't work very well. Okay. I'm not surprised. Um. So as of January of this year, they released the second generation of this product. Okay, and the second generation is um, it's, it's a. Long range uh WAN, long range wide area network is, is the. And, and this particular communication, this particular thing was designed for uh. In, in IT, it's called the IOT, Internet of Things. Okay, and it's designed for that purpose. Now, Internet of Things being, being, you know, uh, something less than a, a, a full communication device like a computer or a phone. Um. The, okay, so it's been, so, so this has been out since January of twenty twenty four. It's been, it's been deployed in, in two locations. I haven't had time to follow up with those two locations to see how, how it works for them. Um, again, my concern is concrete walls and steel doors. Okay, how does that communication work through those? You know, and, and when I talked to the representative from the company, he said, oh yeah, we're a few hundred feet away, but. A few hundred th- feet through what material? And that's what I'm not aware of. That's what I'm not sure about yet. Um. So um. So. That is really what it comes right down to. That's, that's my biggest concern is how well, um, how well that device will communicate. Now, as far as, as security, we can set up the security, because what we're talking about is security from um, from the Wi-Fi device. Through the county network and out to the um, out to the internet. That, yeah, you know, that is, is a known problem, then that's, and we've got known solutions. Basically, what we would do is we would set up a um. Well, they call it a VLAN, a virtual uh, local area network, okay, to where, to where um. The uh, the gateway would have. A, a dedicated path out, that it would not be able to, you know, with that path, it would not be able to communicate with any other. Um, with any other devices. It wouldn't be able to um, to, to, to get into any, any other data, and so that would be clean. Um, one of the concerns. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I would go ahead. You, you start kept talking to someone. You're giving me another concern. Go ahead.
Let's hear your concerns.
Well, I don't necessarily have a concern other than the fact that we're. We have concerns, the county has concerns, but it doesn't know the answers to the concerns. So to me, that means you don't make a decision, you gather more information.
Okay.
I guess I would say. I believe we need to reach out to the two jails that are using it, if there's only two, and or more, if there's more. Um, and. I would think that it might behoove us to reach out to the manufacturer to have them come in and do a test run to prove to us that it will actually work through our jail walls.
Okay.
The hard part with that is if you're saying they have to put in a hub and then wire that from here to there, could they do such a thing in a temporary manner to do a test run? And just kind of stick it on a shelf and run a cable to the control board? And let's run a test run. I can't imagine they wouldn't be able to. We should at least invite them for an offer to prove to us that their product works.
Well, to do the test run, we would still need to segregate that particular device from the rest of the network, which is going to be a fair amount of work. Um, on our part. Um, it's not undoable. Um, they do have backup connections. One is Wi-Fi. Um, which we have limited Wi-Fi in the jail right now. Um, I think we've got two or three devices.
Is that a backup in case the, the, the hard line fails or something, or is that just another option?
It's just another option.
Okay.
Um. And um, and then they also have a cellular, cellular uh. Uh, uh. Backup.
Right.
The cellular backup might be the best bet. Now, again, the question is, is if, if you can't get Wi-Fi to go through the network, how well is it, is, is?
Right, well, to me, if, if we're gonna be using the hub in the hardwire, it doesn't make sense to me to test. Whether they can get Wi-Fi or go through the cellular network if that's not how we're hooking it up. Sure, those two things might fail, but the way they want to do it won't fail. Kind of a scenario.
Yeah.
So unless we can either prove the yes or no, the way they're asking to hook it up either does work or doesn't work. We're really not answering a question by saying it doesn't work with a cellphone or it doesn't work with Wi-Fi. Okay, we're not asking for it to be used that way.
Right, but the question was, was is there another way we can do it? And yes, there is um, to test it. Um, for testing purposes. Um, really, what the question is, is, is will it? Will it communicate through the jail walls? Um, the jail walls are, are, are dense by design. Um, and being able to uh, to communicate through those walls is a question. Um, this particular uh, network, this, this long range wide area network um, technology is ten years old. Um.
The other question I have, and it probably will be for Mr. Culp. Um. Your. Department is requesting seven of these, if I'm remembering correctly, correct?
That's correct.
Now, you're not looking at putting them on every inmate. It's just inmates that you think might. Need one. Uh, you're gonna put one on. With that, when it, when and if. There is ever a test. Does it make sense? To put them in cell block A or F or whatever else, and house all those people in the same area where we get the best connection? So technically, I don't care if we get good connection in cell block dungeon. If the one right across from the control board works fine and throws the signal, then you could just put them in there. End of connection problem.
Right, and, and the building is concrete and steel, uh, but there is a glass front all across the whole block.
Especially right across.
Every cell has a window in the. So.
So that might eliminate, if, if we do a test. That might eliminate the, oh, we can't get it to work. Scenario, if the board so chooses to. Run a test.
But the, the only thing is that I would, I would caution about that, is if you is, if you set up the test. Very specifically, your, your same point about using a um, a cellular signal. And then you wanted to expand on it later on, you're, you're back in the same boat.
Right, I'm just saying you can test it in cell block A and B. Should go ahead and test it in all six of them. But maybe it only works in A, B, and C. Well, technically today, you're only trying to work it in A. So you got B and C is overflow if you ever try to expand the system, knowing that it'll never get to D, E, and F, because it's too far down the dungeon.
Well, I wouldn't know if it ever got to that, because we never tested it.
If we do a test and it fails now, maybe it works in all of them. Maybe it only works in A, but until we actually know the answer. How can we really give you an answer? That's where I'm coming from. Uh, because I think anything we can do. That. Adds a tool, whether we control the jail or Norcore controls the jail or. Some other guy controls jail. I don't really care. If we can do something to reduce liability. And in reducing that liability, you're also potentially saving lives. Because sure, control board operators aren't. Medical health experts, and your blood pressure went up or down by twenty points. Well, maybe he's arguing with his neighbor. I don't really care, but if that cuff reads, hey, look, John's heart rate stopped. Hmm, that might be a medical emergency. Let's run down there. We get there two minutes early, lift him up from the news, he's no longer dead, because he survived. That's a good thing for us. So eh, I don't understand how. These monitors are a bad thing, or that anybody would not want to use them. Period. That just doesn't go through my mind. Now, if we can't, because. They won't work in the jail, or if we can't because our plan is to go to Norcore and we can't buy this contract and then cancel it. Or something like that, that's an extenuating circumstance. Issue number one is, do they work? And that's where I want to test them.
And that's where I'm at right now. What everything that you just said is out of my scope.
Mm-hmm. So I'm, I just, I'm asking for a test to be done and had call the company in and have them show proof of concept.
Okay, no, so um, then I, I have, I have talked to the company, representative from the company, but, but there, it's not my engagement. I can certainly talk to the um. To the other, where the, the two other places that it's installed, get there, you know, because the biggest thing I want to know is, is how is your jail constructed? You know, um, because that's the biggest concern. Is, is how it's constructed.
I would, I would say everyone's different. It may work great in ninety nine, but not in the hundreds, so I. I kind of want to know their answer, but in, unless I get a. An actual boots on the ground here to test it, that's kind of what I'm looking for.
Now, here's the other thing. Um, I, I, my focus was, was on the big red flag, which was the wireless communication. Okay. There could be other things, because this particular version has only been out on the, on the market for six months. Um, I don't know what other, but that's out, but that's operational. That would be out of my, um, out of my scope as well. Um, there could be other issues with it. I don't know.
Eh, if I had my way, I would have. If I had. Unlimited budget. I would have the sensors in every cell. That are like smoke detectors sensing down. Uh, and reading the, the heart rates of everybody in the room. That is a way more expensive option than the wristband, so I, I'm just happy to be able to.
That even.
Do something, because if we can save one life or whatever, and I don't care if we're, if, if the ideal goal is to shift it to Norcore in four months. Great, if we can potentially save a life in the next four months, maybe we should try it. Uh, and then if you want to cancel the damn contract because you went to Norcore, fine, great, cancel the damn contract, she went to Norcore. If Norcore won't do it. But. We have a responsibility to try to save every damn life we can, and that is what this whole jail argument is about. So I don't understand any arguments of. Don't do it, because it's good for the sheriff. Again, this being political, and I, I, I'm.
Along the lines of what you just said, if, if. The jail goes to Norcore, then we cancel the contract after it's installed. The company says that it works. There's three other counties in the state that are installing these. They're in the pipeline to get it going. The state insurance pool is putting up the twenty five thousand dollars to put it in. We sign the contract, get them installed, and if they don't work, we cancel the contract and send it back.
You, you are absolutely correct.
Why do we need to waste months and months?
You, you are correct. Um. I was part of the insurance board that voted for the insurance pool to pay for these. And that happened literally like the week. This board announced it was closing the jail. That's, so that's how new this program is.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for looking into this, uh, Randy. Um. I know a lot of thing, a lot of the questions that were just brought up are outside your scope, so I don't expect you to answer those. Uh, I guess my first question is, is like with the flock cameras, has anyone reached out to the company? Because you said there's only two. Two instances, uh, is, is this of? The, the new system being installed or two instances total?
Two instances of the new system.
Okay, and so is the, is the company, I would ask, uh, Mr. Culp. Is the company willing to do a sixty day beta test for our jail? And have we asked the company that?
Um, I can find out, but um, there's no cost to the county to get this installed. The insurance pool is saying, we should have these in the jail. They're the ones that have the risk of any inmates dying or, or getting injured. They're putting up the money. So, like I said, if we install it, we get a beta test right off the bat. If it doesn't work, like I just said, we cancel the contract.
Um, that's usually not how contracts work when we have, it's when we have a multi-year process, you know, agreement that's in place and.
Thirty day cancellation fee on the contracts, sir.
Right, only a thirty day, and sometimes it takes a while to find out. So if we can ask them to do a beta test, if they're willing to. Right, only a thirty day, and sometimes it takes a while to find out. So if we can ask them to do a beta test if they're willing to. Uh there's also the other possibility of if this is not the only option available in terms of. Equipment and are we required to go through um? An RFP process being that there might be competitors out there who would like to bid as well. Have we looked at and talked to the auditor's office in terms of what our purchasing policy is for these? Just because if the insurance company were to buy them themselves and give them to us. That would be one thing, but considering that we're any entering into a contract with the company. Could we be creating liability for the county by not opening that up for an RFP for other companies that may provide the same service? And is that something that we looked into? So these before we make decisions, we have to ask those questions because usually with all of the stuff that comes in front of us, it's not. You know, here here's what we want. We wanna go buy it. There's limited instances with regards to software that we can do that, and that has to be on the state purchase contracted, whatever else. Being that this isn't just software, this in I would need a P A opinion request on whether or not we can do that the same and. Or is this on the state contract bid? State contract for software purchases. So these are the questions we need to have answers to before we move forward. Because I don't wanna get us in a situation where another company comes in and says, hey, we would have done it for less and and ours is better. But why'd you go buy it from them? You didn't follow your own purchasing manual. So that's just, we need, we need answers to this. And I know that the conversation originally started, it wasn't for the wrist, the wrist things. It was more for handcuffs. And did we look into that? And is that an option? And isn't it from the same company? Um and so why did we choose this option rather than the other option? Because it sounds like to me, we only have a certain amount of money that we had to spend, and that's twenty-five thousand dollars. If we go with a different. You know, one versus the other, it's making that decision. Um why did we choose this over the other option?
Well, inmates don't walk around in the jail with handcuffs on. That's the main reason.
I'm looking at it from the perspective that the conversation wasn't originally, they were about handcuffs for transport. And that was what the original conversation was. Then from the email chain I'm seeing, and then it got changed to the wrist monitors.
Yeah, I I don't know that I would vote yes on the handcuffs because to me, I don't think anybody's commit gonna commit suicide wearing handcuffs behind their back in the back of the squad car. So I don't really know that I need a a monitor on them.
Do you have another question? Um the thing I'd be interested in is as you work through it with Lauren, uh what are your costs gonna be? Show me the money.
My cost?
Yeah. You know, the router or whatever it is, yeah. It's those kinda things. If we have incidental costs beyond what Lauren brought in, I'd like to know what adds to that package.
Okay.
So yeah, I I could go with that. I can I I need to know cost. And if Jake's got legal questions, I would ask him to write up legal. Um write up the legal and send it over there. Uh and then let's call him out and get a test run of the thing, and maybe we can do everything at the same time and speed up the process.
So what I will do is I will call, I'll I'll call and see if I can get the contact information from the company for the two that have been deployed. Um and and I I can I.
Yeah, contact the risk pool because last I knew they those guys were running them for quite some time, and they were the ones that. The our county risk pool. Our insurance company.
Okay.
Um because the counties that were running it were were pushing it in the risk pool. Um and God, they swear by the thing, so. I think you're gonna get um.
Okay.
Yeah, well, so if that sounds like that would hit all the questions or Lauren can't or.
Did you have something to add, Carmen?
With a microphone, you have kind of like, otherwise I get yelled at later because I couldn't hear you.
So my question is, the twenty-five thousand dollars for the risk pool only covers that wristband or that particular wrist? Um so Dan, if you sit on the insurance commissioner or insurance board. Uh are they open if we end up ha- if we're forced to go to an RFP? If they don't cover that cost, then where are we? Then we are still without the help that we need for the inmates.
I I don't think you have the RFP thing to worry about. Let's get the legal answer back from that before we go down that. Approach.
And I don't believe that uh twenty-three thousand is directed straight to the wristbands only. Is that correct?
It is. There's other options.
There is. You can do the the smoke detector type things if you wanted to pay a hundred and fifty thousand. They're only covering the first twenty-five. Right, and there will be. A cost of the county of thirteen hundred dollars or something the first year, but future years you will have monitoring. So there there is some cost, but I think the value of human life. Outweighs sometimes some cost, but if we need legal answers, great. If we need a cost to. Run the the system, great, and let's get in to make improve the system, and then we all have all the information. We can make a decision.
Okay, so I will reach out to the companies um or excuse me, the the. The the entities.
I T departments in those counties, yes.
Yes, the entities, and one of them is in Missouri and the other was in Las Vegas.
Oh, they didn't give you, you should have counties here in Washington State that are running them.
They told me this particular version has only been deployed to two to two counties or to two entities.
Well, see, I would be curious what the counties in the risk pool are using that if we're running something different. See, that would open up third question.
Yeah, because because this version, now they may have the older.
They might have that other version.
Yeah, they may have that. I don't know. I'm now I'm speculating, and I really don't like doing that. Yeah, um but um but there's only two that I was told. Now they have others in the pipeline to have it installed.
Said that the the counties that are running it in the Washington State might be running it through the wifi of the old system kinda thing, where we're looking at the new system kinda thing. But God, they loved it, so.
So if we know where we're going, I'd like to cut it short. We were long on time today, and we have a couple people in the room. I'm not sure if they need anything. We're gonna have to quit at about eleven fifteen for. Uh executive sessions.
Thank you, Lauren.
Yeah, but thank you.
Who uh who's gonna ask the question on um either the the auditor for purchasing or the P A? Is that staff?
I would, if you have specific like P A questions, I would write them out, give them to staff and have them. Cause you listed out some pretty specific. Um legal question and auditor question that I would. I would prefer, I know if I had that question, I would prefer to write it out to make sure the question got answered in the way that you needed answered.
And we'll do it that way.
I would just say, write it out, hand it to staff, let them submit it. I'm good with it.
And I think the conversation was we were gonna let Lauren reach out to the auditor, but he's out of the room, so we'll have Jay craft it and send it to you. Sorry, adding to your workload. Um Mr. King, did you have anything today or? Okay, and Rob, did you have something to? Okay, yeah, come forward, Jeff. Yes, we do. We have. Twelve minutes?
Thirteen minutes max. When the prosecutor comes in, you know your time is up.
Yes, sir. I would expect that. Um and and just for added information, question. Uh my last update on April twenty-third, uh Jake, you asked about the uh D N Rs. Uh MOUs with air assets at Dallasport. And uh. And specifically with the Oregon Department of Forestry and that those MOUs is what they uh. Are actually and they're in place. They're. They're not with the air asset companies. They're actually between our D N R and Oregon Department of Foresteries. To use those and um they are in place. Uh they weren't able to give me an actual effective date. But all those agreements are in place, and as soon as that resource is available for O D F, it is available for D N R. Is the answer I got back.
And they fixed it. I hope they.
Yes, well, yeah, the timing, you know. Is still the question. Um on the um. Uh what Jeff Hunter talked about and and I gave you information uh. Back on the twenty-third as well, the January storm public assistance um through FEMA. Via the state. We did have that uh public assistant applicant briefing yesterday with the state. Um FEMA was not on the line, but what we have, I I sensed some confusion in in Director Hunter's statements. What we have done already is submitted the preliminary damage assessments. Which were in the dollar amounts that I gave you previously, um which totaled eight hundred and seventy-one thousand for all entities in the county. Around five hundred and seventy-one of that is for county government entities. There is also the city of Benjen. It has a twenty-five thousand dollars for a wastewater treatment plant pump replacement. Um the next step in this process is. The official request for public assistance from us to the state. Um there are two interesting things that came up uh in that meeting. One of which is that there's gonna be a twenty-five percent match, so we will recover seventy-five percent of this. Likely. Uh the state is not decided and the legislature is no longer in session, so they won't be able to decide it again until next spring. Whether they're going to cover uh some of that local match or sometimes they'll pick up half. So the the counties only have to pick up twelve and a half percent. But right now, we should expect to only recover seventy-five percent of these costs. Um but there is an added mitigation. It's a brand new program, public assistant mitigation. So in one of our projects for the backhaul of radio traffic from the Click-That site. Um that we're using a local provider for, and they failed us. That that can be considered a mitigation project, so we may be able to have. A more uh savings to county budget in that respect. Push for that. Uh and then the other really good thing for Public Works is that the debris removal is now no longer just overtime. It is regular time and overtime for all the re-removal, and the estimate from Public Works was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that side. So that's a big difference that FEMA just made. Any other questions on that? So I had tried to go fast.
Getting seventy-five percent is better than getting zero percent.
That's correct. I agree, and we're gonna do everything we can to do that. And and it while I'm here, any questions about um? Burn ban regulations, my reply, reference Elk Meadows RV Park.
I have not got to look at it yet. I've got to admit it, but I was glad to see it there.
Do you see any other possible areas where the Elk Meadows RV Park uh issue would would take effect or is it pretty much uh just them?
No, I would have, you know, what I've seen in the past for variances that were issued. That would be the only one that would apply in this manner. I mean, it's a very unique situation with them being outside of a fire district. Under D N R and having a D N R permit.
Yeah, I my biggest issue was. Providing a variance to anybody because now all of a sudden we gave them the variance, so we are on the hook. If we don't provide anything. We're not on the hook for anything, so. They they do what they want as far as.
Hopefully, there's.
On the hook.
Yes.
Than saying here, sure, you go ahead, but you can't have one for your religious ceremony. Bad idea.
Yes, agreed, but thi- this particular circumstances is all that my assessment dealt with. Because it's very.
Eventually, it may come down to a judge deciding if there was ever a lawsuit, but at least I don't have a variance attached to that lawsuit.
Right, and like I said, our code is written in a way that those state agencies. Uh in those areas are the primary. We're still secondary.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Uh Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve pay estimate number three to Deatley crushing for the twenty-twenty-three cushing of Fisher Hill Quarry. W P fifty-four and the Badger Badger Gulch Quarry, W P fifty-three and the Matson Quarry forty-four in the amount of. Six hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and nine dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second motion.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion for approval of pay estimate two and final to Northwest Natural Homes for the Superior Court ceiling demolition and rebuild. In the amount of thirteen thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Second to motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Madam Chair, I'd make a a motion for the approval of pay estimate one to Prime Interiors for the Click-That County Superior Court remodel in the amount of seventeen thousand. Four hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
Second to motion.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion for the approval of change order number one in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixteen cents. For the added concrete needed to complete the foundation of the Click-That County Fairground Sail Bar.
Second motion.
Motion in a second, all those in favor or any discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, aye. Okay, that was good.
Whipping those out.
Yes, we have just a few more minutes. Is there anything else small?
We have on here ten o'clock uh discussion B O A application and community county workshop agenda. I don't know if we can squeeze either of those in five minutes, but. That's the only thing I see on that we haven't hit yet.
Community workshop, maybe we could. B O A, which do you wanna attack? Do you have an application for B O A? Okay, okay. Have you reviewed it?
Uh I've looked for it uh briefly. Um my plan was to do a little more community outreach and see if I can uh get a little more response to give us more choices. Um but throw that in with my vacation in a week being sick. I obviously did not accomplish that. Um I do not have any.
How soon is?
It will with the applicant, so I I mean, if you guys are in a hurry, fine, pick the applicant. If you're not. Let's do a little more research or a little more outreach is my.
How soon is their next meeting? Oh, June first, okay.
Do they need that? There's five members and they need that to make it for them?
Which one is it I'm looking at? I'm not seeing that in the B O A.
Yeah, I I saw when you first got it a month and a half ago, but I haven't looked at it since.
We have time. We could carry it over one more week.
I don't know that that's, I mean, we can.
If you wanna still look for.
Yeah, let's let's throw it out there. I'll put a few feelers out to the general public and let them throw it around it if they do.
Yeah, I think it's a good a- good idea.
Let's put it back on next week's agenda.
Okay.
Because, I mean, technically, we have, it looks like applications from. Six thirty, twenty-three, all the way back to twenty-one.
Okay, so does anyone have discussion for Skamania County Workshop?
I do not.
Uh main thing I think uh would be a good idea to discuss is the corner position.
Yep.
Um they'll want to discuss the uh finance software, how we're moving through that process, how that is. So if somebody, are you still on that committee, Dan?
Uh there hasn't been a meeting in a very long time. I don't have an update. Um I mean, that software was supposed to be starting to transition first of the year. I really don't know where we are with that. So unless you were calling. In Pam. Um maybe Jen, maybe Heather to facilitate that. And whether they can call in on a Zoom to do that. Uh if you were gonna do that, we're the treasure Greg, but but I would probably say Pam because she's our. Person, and if you wanted to do that, I would reach out to her and have her Zoom in the Skamanias and give them an update.
Okay, um I'll reach out to Heather.
What about uh fire or carbon tax or any of that? Any more discussion?
I think they probably will wanna talk about the the carbon um stuff. Um I was gonna add the Western Great Grace World to that conversation.
It's a good one. And I would like to add an update on gorge commission with them.
Okay.
That'll take us a while.
Question that's not probably pertaining to community county workshop. What was the agenda item you wanted to add earlier?
Now I gotta think.
Oh, the consent agenda.
On the, you wanted to add something on the consent, and I was curious what that was.
Oh, um I thought it would be pertinent if we did some kinda certificate of recognition for fallen officers. For this week from the commissioners.
Like to do on the agenda, you can do a public announcement, you can write up a proclamation or have a proclamation done and read that out. And just put that on.
It would have to be.
On our business meeting agenda and just amend their business meeting and do a proclamation, but you can't put it on the actual agenda. That needs to be posted in advance.
Okay.
You there, is there anything this afternoon um that either you have that's not on here for new business or unfinished business that you were thinking of adding? I just wanna make sure. Um I've got uh an event at two o'clock um at the.
And I'll keep it short because we've got.
Right, I just wanted to make sure because I I might have to leave. Yeah, it's uh Interior Secretary is coming to uh. No, this is on uh.
No, I'm.
Community forest stuff, so I've gotta be up in Glenwood by two.
Do you need me? On the blue sheet, it tells about the current I. This one is longer. Which one? Do you prefer? Or is it legal for me to read? Yeah.
So this is, yeah, this is uh current for the current I.
Yeah, and the blue sheet's different than the. Desk card. Desk card looks more. Full, but um. Full, but um.
Yeah, but you don't have to read all this, you can just read it the way it is on the blue card with print I and your.
Okay, then if that's good, I think we're going to move into executive session, we have our. Uh prosecutor and staff here. Um. It's a executive session for elected official report and update prosecuting attorney David Canal. Uh, with staff Rebecca and pending issues update, some of which may qualify for executive session in accordance with. R C W forty-two point thirty point one one zero. Um, I or L, print L, print I. To discuss threatened and pending litigation, issues of a general nature will be discussed in open session, and how long do we need? Ten minutes?
And for the record, that's per in one, per in.
And I, okay, I couldn't tell if it was an L.
We will not be coming back, uh, we'll be shutting it down for the launch hour.